Stand please.
Thank you. You both see things meeting to order. First, we have a ceremony. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to address you all tonight to formally announce the appointment of a new fire chief for the pale fire department. Bruce Harding has been a dedicated member of the department for nearly nineteen years currently or most recently serving as deputy chief and he will be appointed to this position. Pining him tonight will be his wife Natalie and also present this evening are their sons Nicholas and Abe.
You can go to a talk show now. You guys want to take a picture?
Vote up.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping up. Thank you. All right. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Anyone on the council have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and authorized and may urge a sign.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon, Brown, Shields.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right, next we have comments from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council on something not on the agenda? You step up to the podium and state your name and address for the minutes, please. And you've got three minutes.
My name is Lynn Robinson. My address is one six three one eight Winchester Drive East Tacoma, Washington. I am here and I spend my time out at Lake Miola. You guys have this rule that says after fourteen days I get to leave and move on to someplace else for five days. Well, as of today, there are fifteen spots open up out there. So if I was here or if I could have stayed out there for my five days, I could have moved to a different spot and you guys could have earned another hundred bucks for it. The payola. I don't know how to change this law. I don't know if I'm in the right place, but it's kind of crazy because there are a few of us that come a long ways to visit our families. And my daughter took time off work. I parked in her driveway, but she doesn't want me over there. Their mom and dad in the driveway. So I'm just asking you, you know, if there are fifteen spots the day before I leave, that's going to be open for those five days. Is there any reason why I can't rent it, leave my spot, move to another one for five days? I've already got reservations for the next fourteen days out there. And as a matter of fact, I have reservations out there from now through August when we leave to go home. So I would like just to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
We're very stern here.
Yeah.
My name is Curtis Darby. I live at four zero five North Pearl Street, lived there since nineteen ninety-nine. Been talking to Mitch a little bit. I have a problem with tractor trailers going east on Dewey. And they go up into my yard on a dry day. It's not so bad. But usually once or twice a year it's wet. And there was an issue where there were sixteen inch rusts twelve feet up in my yard. Probably happens what four or five times a year probably. I was like to address the council to see what I can do to get no truck signs. East headed east on Dewey. Whatever I need to do to do that.
All right. Thank you Curtis. Thank you. Anybody else?
Test on home. I live at seven oh five East Cascasia. And I have some papers for you guys. If you'd like them, I'm going to show you because it's so different than to you guys.
Yep.
There's three different papers on these. The first one is a sign that I want to have installed in front of our house. My child is blind. This is. Yeah, he's not here.
Okay.
My child is blind and he's just now starting to walk with his white cane. And we have a lot of traffic on Cascasia. The second one is this this pole that we already have in the front of our house. That is for no parking that we could put the sign on. Me and my husband are willing to pay for the sign if we need to. I just need to know what you guys are going to allow us to put in front of the house. We'd like for it to be a twenty-four by twenty-four sign in front of the house. I would like it to go both ways. The last sign shows the sidewalk because that's where they pull up. They have to go on the wrong side of the road to pull up to load him in the mornings and in the evenings to drop him off. Because that's the way the school vans are set up for him to be able to be put in because it's just the way they're for the safety of him to be put in the van is. And that's what I'd like to have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll look into it. Thank you.
Hey, I have one question. Curtis, what was that address that you know?
Seven oh five East Cascasia.
Okay, thank you. I got yours. Thank you.
And Curtis was four oh five.
Five North Pearl Street. I'm sorry.
Four zero.
Five. North Pearl.
Okay, thanks Curtis.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We got hers.
All right. We'll move on to the public hearing for the potential CDVG commercial we got project at one ten East Peoria. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Is there a second? I said.
McMahon, Brown, Shields.
Hi.
All right. You're up.
You're up.
I don't have any comments because I'm not a member of the general public. Anybody have any comments about the public hearing? The project, were there any written or email comments received at all?
No, sir.
Okay. Probably close it. Okay. You have a motion to close the public hearing since we don't have anybody commenting.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Thank you.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Shields. Hi.
All right, thank you. All right, consider approval of CDVG application and documents.
I'm Brett Wagner with Governmental Assistance Services. I'm the grant writer that the property owner hired. I've been in front of you one other time just to talk about the project and I guess get a resolution support at that time. The property owner wanted to be here tonight, but to be honest, I worked too fast for him and he wasn't able to. He didn't, I guess he didn't think I'd be able to get everything ready as quick as we did. But his architect got everything ready. Asbestos inspectus asbestos inspection was done. And we were able to move on and get on this agenda. So he can't be here tonight. But I wanted to be here in case you have any questions about any of the application documents, any other questions about the process. So fire away if you have.
I will say the only feedback I've gotten just personally has been positive.
Great.
Yes, I did see something going on.
It's a really good program for building owners.
I don't guess people either. Could you just kind of recap the project for our?
Yeah, we have to do that there. Yeah, so there's a gentleman from Udora. His name is GW Will. He has a company called Will Properties LLC. He owns the building at one ten East Peoria Street, which is an old church building and forgive me for not knowing which church it is because I'm not from here. Presbyterian Church, I believe. So he, I guess as a little side note, he also is a religious man, a preacher from Udora. He and his father run a church there and won him warrants as well. But he owns a lot of residential and commercial properties. I've worked with him on a couple of other projects in other towns. This program allows a building owner to take an empty building or a building that needs rehab. It doesn't necessarily have to be emptied. And turn it into a viable business through a grant program through the Department of Commerce. What he's proposing to do is turn this building into a wedding venue, which he has been told by many people is something that's needed in the in the city. He's putting in quite a bit of his own money, but as you can see here from from this, it's a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar project to rehab the building and get it ready to be a wedding venue. And the state will reward him with up to three hundred thousand dollars in grant money to get this done. I believe he's he's already put a little bit of his own money into it, you know, paying me to be the grant writer, paying the architect to do the architecture report that's required. And there may be some more work after this project is over with as far as interior finishes that aren't necessarily eligible for this program. So he's going to take that building and fix it up and hopefully turn it into a business. The actual improvements are masonry joint pointing, restroom improvements, some access improvements, structural modifications, a little bit of demolition on the inside. And there was one slight area of asbestos remediation that'll need to be done as well. KDHE requires anytime you're doing demolition in the state of Kansas that you get an inspection. And if you're going to disturb that asbestos, it has to be remediated. This program further requires that if you are going to remediate it, that it become a part of the project and be paid for with grant funds and with owner funds. So that's that's the project in a nutshell.
Okay. And the city is not running any dollars. We're just kind of the organizer of the paperwork. Is that layman's terms enough?
Yeah, and what I what I told you at the study session is it's it's not nothing. There will be mostly on Stephanie's part. There will be some things that she needs to do. We try to take all of the burden off the city as much as we can. We prepare all the documents. We give pretty good instructions on how they need to be signed, how they need to be filed, and then we organize the files and make sure make sure that everything is organized the way that CDVG likes it. As far as finances go, so this is the application. We're going to apply for the funds. I'm very confident it will be awarded because there's still money available and we have a viable project. Once that happens, I'll come back here. The application will be June twenty-fifth. We'll hear something within forty-five days. So that's about August tenth. I'll be back in front of you again with a grant agreement and a board announcement. And as part of that grant agreement, there's a repayment agreement that the building owner signs. There's a recapture agreement that the building owner signs. So it spells out all of the financial aspects of the project and assigns all of the responsibility to the building owner. So no, no dollars will come out of the city of Paola. But again, Stephanie will probably have a little bit of work to do just to get things in front of you as as a council.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Any other question?
I just got one of the Ms. Shannon. From what I hear, there's no financial exposure to the city except for the time that we have on the grant.
Right.
Thank you. So ahead.
I remember the first meeting when GW came in here and something that stuck out to me was he his motivation is historic preservation.
Yes.
You know, so that was something that stuck out to me and I really appreciate that about him.
And the architect that he hired, Hernley Architects, very well respected in the historical preservation space for architecture.
Appreciate people repurposing buildings in town and then also making a financial recovery to our town.
Thank you for your work. Absolutely. Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions or comments, is there a motion?
I move to approve and execute the CDVG application documents to include resolution number two oh two five dash oh one three and resolution number two oh two five dash oh one four for one ten East Peoria Street and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second that motion, Ms. Mayor.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We kind of have a plan in place. I'll get the scanned documents emailed from you. You'll keep the originals. And then we'll talk here again in hopefully about forty-five or fifty-five days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Before we move on, I just want to let you all know, we won't decide anything on your guys' issues this evening. I thought I heard you say something because they may. So we it's we don't take action on anything on public comment at the meeting that you're at, but we will follow up if we need to. Okay, you're welcome to stay if you want, but you don't have to.
You have a lot of fun things.
Thank you.
Change your life.
I always forget to say that, like not everybody knows how it goes.
Yeah.
I thought they were easily.
I thought. All right.
So it's always been there.
I always forget to say that part. I should probably read the paper and that'll be helpful. All right, new business, late payment charges and reconnection fees.
Yeah, so this is just to take that after hours resource fee out of the city code so people aren't confused and think they can get it after resources we dispatched. We don't have that option. So it's just to correct that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? We talked about it pretty well. That works, Sydney. If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance thirty-two thirty-two amend date for fifteen dash one oh six late payment charges and reconnection fees to the city of the pale in the Paola City Code.
I'll second that.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right, balcony folks at eleven South Pearl Street. And by the looks of the memo, it already the mural issue was taken care of already.
Yes, I checked the next morning. The actual architectural plans show the balcony being moved farther and had a meeting with the owner. And he said that was one of his big priorities and in making sure that goes back and not covering it. He has no intention of covering a mural.
Good.
So Brad Green is the owner of the building at eleven South Pearl. He's in the process of getting building permit to add three apartments on the second floor of the building. And for the apartments include two balconies with low overhead in the public pedestrian alley next to the building. Mr. Green has engaged with Baldridge Engineering on the structural design of the balconies, which we don't have those structural plans yet, but the architectural will match up with the with the structural. The engineer suggested these balconies designed to be supported by four posts that extend to the alley below. With the balconies designed in this manner, it would minimize the side load force put on the building walls. For this design, the post would meet the ground at approximately five feet out from the building and would be approximately ten feet deep of solid. Architectural plans for apartments are currently in review. Council approved the encroachment into the public way. Engineer plans will be drawn and fully reviewed for compliance. After discussion at the June third board study meeting, staff check of the architectural plans would show the western balcony be located further to the rear of the building. This would prevent posts from covering the mural on the side of the building. This was discussed with the property owner as well, and he advised he will not be covering any part of the mural. Staff's recommendation is the approval of the balcony support posts.
Yeah. Any other questions on this one?
You see, that's, you know, we had to show up and working on the church and then we're repurposing the building. So that's all all good news.
It's definitely good to see some interest in the downtown area.
Yeah.
Fixing up those old buildings.
It's coming to fruition, stuff we're hoping for for a while.
Yeah.
Anybody else? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I think that she goes there, isn't it?
On the square.
The square.
Yeah, I believe so.
I move to approve the construction of the balcony support post in the pedestrian alley along eleven South Pearl Street, Ms. Mayor.
I'll second that.
Man.
Hi.
Brown.
Shields.
Hi. Motion passed. Removal of dangerous guard at six ten East Cascasia.
So at the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, public hearing was held and the city council voted to pass the resolution declaring the bar and structure at six ten East Cascasia dangerous and directing the owner to remove said structure. After the meeting, the resolution was posted in the paper, sent to all required parties and posted on the building. Staff has not received any communication from the owner of the property in regards to a plan for demolition. Staff was contacted by national field representatives in regard to the demolition of the structure as they typically work to help obey building code violations on mortgage properties. On June third, twenty twenty-five, staff was informed by national field representatives that they would not be able to help the homeowner in this case. Staff's recommendation is that due to the owner's inaction in removing the building and its continued state of being hazardous to the safety of Paola citizens. Staff is requesting city council's authorization to have the dangerous structure located at six ten East Cascasia Street removed and the property made safe. For financial impact, the cost for demolition is unknown at this time. However, the community development department does have available funds in the budget for this work. This project will be open for bids for a period of one month, at which time staff will present them to council. Additionally, I spoke with the national field representatives and they said they may be able to help with the demolition cost after it's done, maybe covering the bill for the homeowner, getting us paid and then just assessing that to the mortgage. So that would be a big, big reassurance and help on us. Not a guarantee, but it's definitely better than nothing.
Yeah. What companies was it that?
It's a they're called National Field Representatives. I think they contract with several different mortgage companies and they just specialize in like demoing buildings, abating nuisances, stuff like that.
Okay.
So I believe the mortgage company, when they were sent the notice of the resolution, more than likely reached out to them and they contract with them.
All right. Any other questions on this one? If not, is there a motion?
I move to allow city staff to advertise and request both request for bids to demolish the dangerous structure located at six ten East Cascasia.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Motion passed. All right, one fifteen West Wea, reopen requests for bids.
Yes, so as we went over work studying, we did not receive any bids for one fifteen West Wea. The bids were open for since April sixteenth and they closed on June third. And the minimum was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which was the appraisal value that we got. I believe that council has been in discussions on reopening the bid, so we need a motion on whether to reopen or not, and if we would like to have a minimum, but that's what we're requesting.
I think it was good. We went for the price value first, just for due diligence purposes. So I thought that we did that even though it didn't amount to anything.
What is the appraised value again?
It's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, first paragraph of your memo.
Okay.
Have you guys? Have you had calls or interests at all or people are kind of waiting?
Not since the bid has closed, no.
Okay. And council, have any feelings on it? I know we talked a little bit about it at the work study.
You know, we talked about it last Tuesday and kind of where I again, I'm just one of the council members to and everyone agrees, Mayor, we did do due diligence. If we we want to recruit as much as taxpayer dollars as we can, two fifty-five was the appraised value. Now that being said, it garnered zero, zero interest. It sounds like none whatsoever. I would throw it out to the council members that we allow staff to rebid it with no reserve. But I believe, Randy, that in the contract, we can reject any and all bids.
Yes, the bid documents already say that we can accept or reject any bids for any reason. So yes.
Yeah.
I think that, like I said, I would go with no, no reserve and then that we can start gauging a value on the building. So again, I'm just one of four. So that that's where I stand.
And for the public, I'd like to say that this is our money. It isn't money out of our general fund. So.
I think that's a very wise position to take. And it seems like it's would be the most efficient at all.
Timeline wise, everyone cares to keep the same almost timeline, so we would bring it back to probably August so I can get it in the paper and open for thirty days.
All right, I'll make a motion that the council direct city staff to reopen the bids with no reserve.
I'll say.
Is that correct terminology for you to move forward?
Yeah. I segmented.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right. See, I bet there's going to be some interest now. All right. Staff reports, chief, do you have anything?
He does not have any.
Wow. Not even after alumni weekend. That's good. Brett? No? Mitch?
I always have something.
Yeah, that's okay.
We're up to two hundred and fifty permits. Few of those are new home permits within the last couple of months. And we've got a couple more in review, so houses look good. As of now, we don't have anything on the agenda for planning commission next month or next week. So as of now, we won't have a meeting unless something's up. My father's house started grading and clearing all the trees out there. They're going to be piling up and applying for a burn permit to get them taken care of and we'll be permitting here before long to start installing all the utilities. Get to work on it. I spoke with the contractor today and I believe they're going to be saving enough money with all the donated time and effort on everything that they may be able to get farther into phase two or at least get a good plant for phase two sooner than they thought. So hopefully that means a smooth transition into it and no waiting between some site plan steps.
It's probably easier if it's pretty well back to back.
Yeah. I've been talking with Ice Cream Chapel on the square, some lately. They have a tentative opening date in July and have a for sure date, but thinking some time in July. So excited for that and a lot of the public. It'll be good to have one.
Yeah, yeah. For sure.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Randy? Yes, ma'am. Just a couple with the finishing of all of our fiber projects. We have some ribbon cutting. So June eighteenth, we're going to have MoCandial on the square at nine o'clock. That is for the free public wifi. It's going to be ribbon cutting that we're posting with them. And then on June twenty-third at three o'clock on the square Comcast is going to have ribbon cutting for the end of their project. And then I sent out an email just a reminder that I will be out of office Thursday and Friday this week for a conference witch talk. So if you need me, email, cell phone, you can still reach me. So that's who's I am.
Stephanie?
I have anything?
Nothing.
All right, Jared, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things here. Both Mitch and Randy, thank you for sending out that deal that shows the process you've got to go through because lots of people just think, oh, at the end of the day, we just show up and, you know, brush those up with a backhoe and a dozer and then.
Wish it was easy.
That that's not how that works. And like I said, Kansas is a huge property rights state. So I think then everybody can appreciate the frustration that they have, but also that the hoops we got to jump through. So with that. And then I don't think I've ever said anything about the tart buildings look really, really good out of red. And they they were up and they put in. So yeah, it it looks tremendously better. It looks tremendously better. So that's all I had on here. I don't know anything.
Liam, I'd like to say that the park square looked lovely and the flowers that have been planted are great. Really adds to the park, you know. Looks good. There's a few dead trees.
Yeah, all over town.
I know.
We're having a hard time with trees lately.
I know.
All the storms, I think.
Well, and even before we retired, not just here, even like you've seen a lot of it, seeing so many dead trees.
They're everywhere for some reason.
All right, the only thing I have is. All right, the only thing I have is to remind everybody, there's lots of stuff going on in town coming up, so car show's Saturday. And just lots of good things going on, so keep a lookout.
I got, I got one question for you, Mayor. It's a good question. I seen that you posted something on Facebook the other day. It was kind of a little arch. Yeah, it was cool. It really was.
A little travel blogger visited. I don't think anybody paid anything for it.
Just so you know, we did, just so you know, you paid four hundred dollars for that.
Okay, well, you think we're all sure of it then? There's, those people have a huge reach, though. Like, there's people that follow them and that we would never have any influence over.
That was kind of a pre-World Cup buildup is what we're, so to get people to be like, okay, because Jim spoke that with the international visitors, they're going to want the true American farm experience, so we were trying to advertise them kind of pretty hard, so.
Well, I think, I mean, they're doing a really good job of trying to plan for the World Cup, but it's huge.
It is huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than, more than the population of Kansas City visiting, so it's, it's been impressive to go to meetings and hear all the things they're doing to try to be ready for it.
But like you said, I will say that that one paper itself, it was very nicely well written.
And she had a posting and a video, so.
Yes.
That's always good. All right.
I did think of something.
Yes.
That I was going to talk about, and I forgot. I read an article this week about the challenges that the Plaza is having to keep it going and vital and the challenges that how it relates to the retail space and what retail business owners run into, and it made me think about the square and I just wanted to, it was good the day to, to think about the positive things that are happening on the square and to know that if something like the Plaza is struggling with it, that it's, we're also within a space that is normal and but it's also encouraging to see the positive moves. And Chief Corbin, I got a good report on some of the new officers.
Good deal.
Being very kind and courteous.
Oh, awesome.
And that was while they were giving a ticket.
Boring, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, and I was going to say, you know, public safety goes right along with the health of our city and downtown and that type of thing, so. Well done there, too. We're going to make you feel better since the whole fire department was here. All right, that's all I have. Maybe I'll say anything else? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Ms. Mayor.
I'll second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Brown.
Shields.
Hi.